My grandfather was in World War II, but he's.
All right, seven o'clock.
There's two possibilities that could have happened.
Hundred years old, insane. Yeah, that generation is almost all about now.
The greatest generation of all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Westbrook School Committee meeting, Wednesday, November 10, 2021. Dr. Lant here.
Pledge allegiance.
Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Lant, if you can roll call, please.
Certainly. Stephen Berry.
Here.
Jeremy McGowan.
Here.
Andrea Mancuso.
Here.
Jessica Meninsky.
Here.
Beth Schultz.
Here.
Vice Chair Suzanne Salisbury.
Here.
Chair Norrie Poitras.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Adjustments to agenda were sent to you in an email. We're going to be adding 12.1.2 Library Media Specialist Westbrook Middle School and 12.3 Request to Approve a Trip to Ireland for Westbrook Middle School Students, April 2022, and 12.4 Request to Approve a Cooperative Agreement with Wyndham &amp; Gray New Gloucester for Wrestling. Do we have approval of the minutes to our motion? Sue? Jeremy? Approval minutes from October 13, all in favor? All.
I wasn't there.
Huh?
I don't know if I can approve the minutes when I wasn't at the meeting.
Yes, six. One's the same. Your communication correspondents are in your packets. No student government reports this evening. At this time, I'll have public participation for agenda items only three minutes. Do I have anyone from the public? See you none. Dr. Lant, can we hear superintendent's report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mrs. Poitras. In your packets tonight and tomorrow or this week and Thursday folders and in our evening email, you'll receive the November Teaching and Learning Newsletter. A few highlights in the newsletter, you'll notice there are some additional COVID information, some additional information around our vaccination clinics, which are coming up next week, and we're very pleased and thankful to our nurses as well as our partners at Northern Light for providing those clinics for children ages five through 11. Friday is the last day to sign up for those vaccinations, so if any families still want to sign their children up to be vaccinated here at school, please, please fill out the forms and the paperwork by the end of this week. Families are still also able to sign up for pool testing if they'd like to participate in that. We have had a number of cases of COVID. We've actually had almost as many cases at this point as we had in the entire last year, which is a little alarming, but that's something that we're still dealing with. We're still working and living in a time of a pandemic. I am pleased to say that about 45% of the students who were identified at close contacts avoided being quarantined because they either participated in pool testing or because of one of the other exemptions, which means our masking policy, as well as our social distancing within our classrooms and within our schools. So I'm pleased that we are able to provide those mitigation strategies and keep as many kids in school as we possibly can. Thanks to all of our nurses, all of our administrators, all of our contact tracing teams at each of the building who are making those really difficult calls to inform people that they were a close contact, that they were impacted directly by COVID, as well as sending out emails and other communications so that we can work through this together. Those are hard phone calls to receive as families, as employees. Thank you to everyone for your patience and your understanding and knowing that no one wants to make those calls and we don't want to make them as much as you don't want to receive them. But we're still, we're still struggling through this time of a pandemic and we're doing overall a really good job of trying to mitigate that. So you'll have some information about that within the, within the Teaching and Learning Newsletter. I would like to congratulate our two returning members of the Westbrook School Committee and two of our new members to the Westbrook School Committee who will be joining in November. Congratulations to our vice chair Sue Salisbury and to Beth Schultz, who were reelected to the school committee for three-year terms, and congratulations to Katie Rice and Jessica Foley, who were elected in their respective wards to two-year terms as well. And we do have two members of the school committee who will be retiring after this meeting. This is their last official meeting on the school committee, but I know they won't be strangers and they'll still be continuing to participate in, in the public life of our schools. Thank you, Steve Berry, who served on the school committee for three terms?
Two.
Two terms. Steve and I have known each other forever, I think, back from our Kogan School days. I taught one of Steve's kids, I had his other kids in school. We've known each other a long time. Steve's been a great advocate for children, always, always, keeping the children at the very center of every decision he makes, every single, every single comment he makes, he keeps kids in mind, and I appreciate that as, as a person and as your superintendent. Thank you for that service over the years, Steve. And Jessica, thank you for your term serving on the Westbrook School Committee, the knowledge that you brought to this position, your experience in, in many types of past lives, as you often say, working in education, working in law, working in a variety of, of, of other ways that contribute to our schools. You've really made a tremendous impact on the community and on this committee, and I also, I'm glad you want to stay involved in some different, different opportunities. We won't let you be a stranger.
Thank you.
We will be, we'll be recognizing both Steve and Jessica most likely in January with a special, special recognition and reception, but if we could, thank you for your service for these many years on the Westbrook School Committee. While we're recognizing, I'll jump around a little bit, I would like to recognize two of our fall athletic teams for some great accomplishments, as well as our marching band for their accomplishments this fall, too. I'm not sure, I can't see everybody who's here. Do we have members of our girls soccer team here tonight? Well, congratulations to our girls soccer team, who received the Good Sportsmanship Award for their season, so congratulations, ladies, for your outstanding achievement. And our volleyball team, do we have volleyball players with us tonight? Congratulations to our volleyball team, who also received a Good Sportsmanship Award this year. Watching both, both of those teams compete and the joy that both teams bring was really inspirational, you know, and I think this year especially, winning a sportsmanship award means extra because of what we've had to go through to make sure a season happened. And Mr. Morelli, thank you, our athletic director, Mr. Morelli, for helping to manage a challenging season with a lot of COVID issues and protocols in place, but thank you for helping the season happen. Thank you, Blake. And we do have members of our marching band here, our Blue Blazers marching band. Could you guys stand up and be recognized? Our marching band is the platinum medal-winning band in New England, placed actually second by, what was it, four tenths of a point? Two tenths of a point, like a 96 to a 96.2 in the New England Championships, the best in the state, the best in New England. And also to our drum major and to our color guard, who received top honors as well. So congratulations to our Westbrook Blue Blazers marching band. Does anyone want to say anything, any of our, our band members?
Can you just come up to the mic, please?
There's a podium right there if you want.
Thank you for recognizing us. We don't really get a lot of shout-outs, so we all really appreciate it, and it's nice to get some recognition, and we've been really fortunate to have this year, and I'm glad that we did so good, so thank you so much.
Our, our band director, Kyle Smith, isn't able to be here tonight, too, but Kyle and his whole team of coaches and specialists have really, again, year after year, they have do themselves with our, with our marching band's performance. The show this year is absolutely stunning, which I, I say every year, and I'm amazed at the difference in the show every year. If you haven't had a chance to see it live, you can still see a recording of that on the band booster's website, on the, on the band's website, so you can watch the different competitions or the different performances of, of this year's award-winning marching band. And thank you to our boosters, to our parents. As a parent of musicians, I know how hard it is to raise musicians and the countless practices and the, the, the music that you keep hearing over and over and over again until it's perfect. Thank you for the support that you give to our kids and to our program. Our music program is one of the jewels in our crown in Westbrook, and we're so proud of you, so congratulations, guys. I would like to now give you a quick update on Westbrook High School. Our high school construction or reconstruction is going extremely well. The electrical work is, is, is coming together. The third floor is finished, I understand, as of this afternoon, which is great news. We'll be getting the rooms back in shape and cleaned up and ready to, to go. The second floor is, is next in the queue of its, of its completion, followed by the first floor. We anticipate making an announcement at the end of this week or by the beginning of next week with a concrete date for our return to, to the high school, so we're getting very excited about that. Ms. Harvey, Mr. Grett, Mr. Colgan are making plans, along with the faculty, along with the, the staff at, at the high school, for that return to school, which is coming up very, very soon. And, and thank you to everybody for your patience and your perseverance. It's, it's, it's been hard and it's almost over, so we look forward to that announcement later this week or next week with a date when we will absolutely be ready to return to Westbrook High School. Our, our construction has gone well. We've worked very collaboratively with, with, with the fire inspector, with code enforcement here in the city. We look forward to, to those final approvals so that we're able to be back in school as quickly as we can. So thanks to everybody who's had a part in that. In your packets tonight, you have a document that we've developed as a protocol in our school department to address observances of religious holidays in our schools by our students and our staff. It's a, it's a procedure, not a policy, although we have brought the, the procedure, the language to our policy committee for consultation and review. We have a number of students and staff in our schools, a great number of students and staff in our schools, who are active members in, in their respective religious faiths, and oftentimes events are scheduled that conflict with religious observances. We always excuse students who have to be absent because of religious holidays, but oftentimes special events are scheduled that might conflict with an observance that is really important to our families and our students and our staff that we should be trying to avoid. So as part of our, our ongoing work with equity and opportunity here in the district, we are looking at ways to, to address systems where things do not seem as equitable as possible or things that are barriers to opportunity. We were pleased to address the question about religious holiday observations, observances through the, the language that's in this procedural document. It's something that we will be using within our schools, but I wanted to, to read it out loud to you. It's not policy, so it doesn't receive school committee approval, but I wanted to make sure you all saw that and read it out loud for anybody at home who's listening, and you'll be seeing that posted on our website as well, and you'll seeing it put into practice. So just really briefly, "As our school population continues to diversify, we must recognize that many faiths are part of our schools, both with students and staff. In such, we are asking staff to pay particular attention to major religious holy days when planning. As some holidays have approximate dates, others may be impacted by regional customs and cause variations. It should be noted that Jewish and Islamic holidays begin at sundown the day before the date specified for the holiday. Please do not schedule the following activities on religious holidays: important school events, school-related activities beyond the typical school day, exams and quizzes, guest speakers and presentations above and beyond typical school activities. Religious holidays that may require students to miss school are considered excused absences. Some students in a particular faith may follow all the dictates of the faith, while others may follow only a few of the rituals. Please note that dietary restrictions may be observed during certain religious holidays, including fasting during the school day. Families, as partners in education, should inform the school if their students are going to miss school because of a religious commitment. Please note that dietary restrictions may be observed during certain religious holidays, including fasting during the school day." And the holidays that we have listed in, in this document, which will be updated every spring for the planning of the next school year, include Rosh Hashanah, which was September 6 to 8, Yom Kippur, which was September 15th to 16th, the week of Sukkot, September 20th to 27th, Shemini Atzeret, September 28th, Shemcat Torah, September 28th and 29th, Hanukkah, November 28th to December 6th, Christmas, December 25th, Ash Wednesday, March 2nd, the beginning of the month of Ramadan on April 2nd, Passover, April 15th to the 23rd, Good Friday, April 15th, Easter, April 17th, Eid al-Fitr, May 2nd through sundown on May 3rd, and Eid al-Adha, July 9th through sundown on July 10th. I would like to note, too, that this concern was actually brought to, to my attention and to our attention as a school department by one of our high school students, who, and as a representative, as a spokesperson for his peers, wanted to bring this to our attention because he does practice his faith and he's had to make choices about practicing a certain religious custom, or studying for a test, or attending a special event, and felt that that wasn't a fair ask of him, and he was absolutely right. So I would like to recognize that part of this, this statement, part of this policy is, is truly rooted in our students and, and because of our students' advocacy for, for such a statement within our schools. And I did show him this statement, and he said, "That's exactly what we're looking for." So we will be, we've already been, been referring to these dates with, as a school system, but now we have a formal procedure in place to, to avoid scheduling conflicts. And again, this is part of our, our ongoing work to support our equity and opportunity across all of our schools. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Sure. Thanks. I just wanted to thank Dr. Lantia for working on that particular document and the observance of the religious holidays. Like you said, it's a great testament to the work we've done around diversity, equity, inclusion, and I think it's a great next step to go along with the other work, and I'm just really happy to see that, that that's happening. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the vaccine clinics. Can you give us a sense of how many families have registered to take advantage of the school clinics that are happening next week?
I don't know the exact number of, of families that have registered. I, I can find it, I'd send that to you. I'm not sure how many. I, I understand that there was quite a bit, so I'm hopeful that a number of families will have taken advantage of this. We did hear from some families that they've already accessed the vaccinations through their PCP or through pharmacies or other places, but we are very pleased to, to have this happening pretty quickly, as soon as the vaccination was available.
Great. I know, I had gotten some questions from elementary parents around the ability to accompany their young learners to the vaccine clinic, and appreciate both you and the nursing team getting back to those individual parents so quickly. And given the level of appreciation for them being able to accompany their child and accommodations being made, I'm wondering if it makes sense to let parents know that that might be an option to encourage additional families who might benefit from taking advantage of the clinic.
We, we, we certainly can do that. We've let some folks know, we already had some flu shot clinics a few weeks ago, and some of our kids had a hard time with the flu shot clinic, so there, there were some calls made to some families who were signing up, who might want to accompany their, their kids. We certainly want to do that. Of course, if any parent does come in to accompany their child, they'll have to be masked, they'll have to sanitize, they'll have to follow our procedures, and only come in for their child's time, for, for their appointment and their, their observation period afterwards. But our, our nurses have done a great job, you know, communicating that, and they're always accessible, and folks do call them or, or send an email, but if, if any of our families, if, if that's a barrier for any of our families, we certainly want to make that available, so we can mention that.
Great, thanks.
Okay. On to Chair Committee reports. Education Programs Committee.
Yes, we met a couple weeks ago, and at the meeting, Dr. Lantia and Dr. O'Donnell provided updates on the district's equity efforts. And as we remember, there's five pillars to our plan: leadership for equity, building capacity, auditing our systems, providing opportunities, and engaging the community. And so we discussed the fact that we have, well, not so new hire anymore, Amanda Atkinson-Lewis as the new Equity Coordinator, who took over the role that was formerly inhabited by Regina Phillips. She'll be working with the district on equity goals. We also talked about the fact that the Equity Task Force is now the Equity Leadership Group, comprised of teachers, admin, and school committee members, and that group works together to, you know, bring forth our equity initiatives and make sure they're prioritized. There are some professional development opportunities coming up at the turn of the new year. I believe Creative Discourse Group will be working with us, and it sounds like a day-long forum with community members, school committee, other partners in January. There'll be more information coming about that soon. But, you know, we, we just talked about, you know, various pathways to equity around, you know, talking about future conversations about staffing, ways that we can involve students, including a really exciting effort to recruit students interested in educational field in partnership with USM to potentially become educators in our own district, which is really amazing. And, you know, really just, sounds like we have a lot going on that's really positive. There are notes to all these meetings if people want more explicit details, but the next meeting is next week, next Wednesday at 5:00 PM, I believe. Is that correct, the 17th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
The committee meeting minutes mention a date is being scheduled in January for a day-long workshop for the community, the school committee, and other partners. Is there a date set for that yet, or do we know when? Seems like advance notice for a day-long.
Yes.
Workshop would be really helpful.
Yes, and I will get that out. Unless, Dr. O'Donnell, do you know the exact date? Is it the 15th? I want to say it's like the fif, it's mid-month.
Okay.
We'll get that out.
Thanks.
And we are intending that to be an in-person meeting unless we can't be in person.
That's great. Facilities Committee.
Hi, as Peter mentioned earlier, kind of pulled a Wendy Harvey sculpton thunder. Thank you, Peter.
Sorry.
We're looking to get the high school open as soon as possible in the next few weeks, I think. I was through it a few weeks ago myself, and are very impressed with the work they've done. I'm really happy with the lighting improvements that we're seeing, the LED lighting. I think it's going to be a, a real game changer for the kids and students for learning. Just the, the difference between the, the white light and that old yellow is night and day, so I'm enthused about, about that. We've got a few things we're going to be working on, obviously, at the middle school to take care of here in the next few weeks as well. And I'd also like to bring up to the city about our athletic fields, fields that should be used. I'd like to possibly, Peter, sit down with the Athletic Director, because I know at the end of our travel soccer season here just a few weeks ago, we unfortunately played on a field we shouldn't have been playing on, and there was, when I talked to the president of the league, he told me he wasn't getting anywhere as far as trying to find other alternative fields. So I'd like to possibly sit down with the Athletic Director and see what, in future, our options would be. And also with the city, maybe some of the city councilors could come to our next facility meeting on Monday at 5:30 at the central office to discuss the fields, our accessibility. We know the middle school needs drainage to be able to utilize the fields that are there safely. I don't want to see any more athletes hurt on fields that just aren't up to, up to par, up to code, so I'd like to see those incorporated. I know we've got a, a lot on our plate right now with the high school and with the middle school, but I'd also like to kind of throw that in there. So if, and is there any city councilors or even the mayor that would like to attend the next Facilities Committee meeting, I would definitely welcome that, so we can have more of an open forum as to what we're looking at cost-wise and how soon we can start tackling the many different issues that we have.
Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening. We talked a little bit about utilities and the prices that I think we've all noticed are going up and sort of an issue around prices being locked in. Some of our locked-in prices are going to end in December, so we need to keep a close eye on that, and Dr. Marjanis is working really closely on that, keeping an eye on things. We talked about. We talked about, we go through our general reports throughout the financial reports. We got a good update on all of those. One thing that came up that I want to put a plug in for is that this year, families have free and reduced lunch. Everybody gets, excuse me, free breakfast and lunch, and all families get that. And, which is a great thing, but it also has created an issue where some families that would normally fill out the free and reduced lunch school application aren't filling it out. And the impact that that has is it changes our free and reduced lunch rate. So, which affects our overall funding, potentially can affect our overall funding from the state. So our average, we were told, has been about at 60%, but now it's down to about 54%, tied pretty closely to some applications not being returned. So we, you know, Dr. Marjanis and Mary Emerson from the School Nutrition Department, they're working closely on that. But it's something that I think as a community, if we can encourage our neighbors and friends, you know, to fill out that paperwork, because it is going to be impactful if we don't have a clear representation of our free and reduced eligible students. It could be impactful for some of the federal funds that we've received and state funds. So we're going to need to, I don't know, maybe we should make a video or something. I don't know. We need to do something about that. We do get an update on the high school, the expenses. We have not received the final numbers yet as far as with the insurance company. Still keeping a close eye on that. We have applied for some renovation loans to help us defray some of those costs, which Brandon did a great job of telling us about that and the work that's being done to make sure we're, those funds are eligible. And then we talked about, mentioned about the wrestling co-op agreement that we're going to hopefully get into with Wyndham and Gray, which is an exciting thing. And so we'll hear more about that. And then in other exciting news, we need a boiler for the middle school before it gets cold. So that's going to be something that's going to happen quickly so that we can get that replaced before it does get cold. So that's something, we do have some emergency funds available that we'll be able to use, thankfully. But that's going to be a significant cost to the district that we'll have to pay.
Any questions? Thank you. Policy Committee?
Yes, thanks. We met on October 27th and had another jam-packed agenda with thoughtful discussion. We reviewed eight policies, tabled three of them, and worked on five of them and just made very minor changes to them. And, you know, they are listed in your packet, but just real quickly, we're getting down to I's, which means we're into instruction. And so two of the policies that we made, just slight changes to, were two involved on the IEP process. Another two involved homeschooling and participation, and another one involved life-sustaining emergency care. So again, just tweaking some of the words, like, for example, changing parents to guardians. And then there were three that we tabled because we needed more information. Two were, we need more information from the nurses. One was about first aid, and the other one was the procedures about that. And then the other one we needed more information about was the grievance procedure in special ed. That seemed to be a unique policy. So we will discuss those at our next meeting on the 22nd. And as you'll see on your agenda, we have the second reading for the use of physical restraint and seclusion. We discussed that at our last meeting and had Kelly Fogg here to explain kind of why the changes were needed and the changes were reflective of legislation. So tonight, we're going to have the second reading of it. So thank you.
Any other committee reports? Onto old business, 11.1. Request to approve changes to the Westbrook School Department Policy, JKA-A, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion. Action item, final approval. Do I have a motion? Motion by Andrea, second by Steve. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. 11.2. Request to approve changes to the Westbrook School Department Policy, JKA-A-R, Procedures on Physical Restraint and Seclusion. Action item, final approval. Do I have a motion? Andrea, second by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. Onto new business. 12.1, Administrative Teacher Nominations. Motion? Sue? Yes, second by Jessica. Yes, please.
Is this just for 12.1.1?
It says 12.1. Do we have anything on 12.1?
12.1.1 is Adult Basic Education English Language Learning Coordinator in Adult Education.
Okay, that falls under that. Okay.
Yeah, so I made motion to approve the Adult Basic Education.
Yes, English Language Learning Coordinator for Adult Ed. 12.1.1. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. First, the gem is 12.1.2. Library Media Specialist, Westbrook Middle School. And the nomination is Jessica Goodwin. Do I have a motion? Sue, second by Jessica. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. 12.2. Request to approve the Emergency Operation Procedures for the 2021 through 2022 school year. Action item, first approval. Do I have a motion? Sue, second by Beth. Dr. Lancia, would you like to say anything about this?
Sure. This is an annual update to our School Emergency Operations Plan, which is a confidential document. Thank you to our school committee members, particularly Sue Salisbury and Noreen Poitras, who go through that with a fine-tooth comb to find every missing period and semicolon and date. But thank you for updating that. This is an annual update that we have to do every single year.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. Onto 12.3. Request to approve a trip to Ireland for Westbrook Middle School students in April 2022. Action item, first approval. Do I have a motion? Motion by Beth, second by Jeremy. On this trip, this is a trip that we approved two years ago, is correct, Dr. Lancia?
Yes, and I saw Mr. Mullen come in. I'm not sure Mrs. Dugas is here, too, if they have specific questions. This is a trip that was proposed and approved two years ago and did not happen because of the pandemic and at the beginning of the pandemic in 2020. It was not held last year. We're very hopeful that it can be held this year, and if it can't be held, we'll probably come back again. But if there are questions, Mr. Mullen and Mrs. Dugas are here to answer any for you.
Yes, I asked Dr. Lancia to have this approved again only for the reason since it's been two years. I think it was appropriate that we reapprove this or deny it. Does anyone have any questions for them?
I don't have any questions. I just think it's a very well-designed plan, and I appreciated reading all of the details.
I was very happy in this proposal that you actually have the insurance in there. It's always a typical question about coverage of liability and everything. Anyone else? Would you like to say anything?
We just appreciate that you're listening to us again about this. We've had many more travelers sign up for this trip because we kept delaying, and I think folks really are anxious to get back to traveling. And we have a lot of parents going with their students. And since it's been a while since we first started planning this, now we have a few high school kids going that were originally, of course, our middle school students. And so we're really looking forward to this trip. I talked to our tour agent yesterday, and she gave me all the information we need about their COVID precautions, testing before we leave and before we come back, and all the precautions that they're taking while we're on the trip, cleaning their buses every day. And we'll be, our own cohort, because we have the numbers, we're going to be all on our own. We won't be grouped with another school, so that's actually a good thing. And all our travelers are, like I said, pretty much all Westbrook people, all the parents and relatives of the students that are going. So we are very anxious and hopeful that we can go. EF says that there's 30 to 40 trips, even just in Maine, that are planned for the spring. And so as far as they are concerned, it's all a go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Lancia, I'm just going to ask you on our next approval on this, that you ask the nurse what the procedure would be for the kids returning back to school. Is it going to have to wait 10 days to return since they dig overseas with COVID? What are the guidelines right now in place for that?
Sure, I can get that information. The guidelines now may change by April, but I'll ask the nurses what the current guidelines are.
Yes, please. The nurses aren't coming on the trip with them?
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Please no contact tracing in Ireland, please. I don't want to make that call.
All in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. Onto important dates. I'm sorry. 12.4. Request to approve Cooperative Agreement with Wyndham and Gray New Gloucester for Wrestling at an annual cost of $5,400 for two years. Do I have a motion? Motion by Jeremy, second by Beth. Any discussion?
And just to verify, that's approximately $10,000 less than we're currently paying with the old agreement with GORM. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Seven approved, none opposed. Onto important dates. November 11th, Veterans Day observed, no school, central office is closed. November 15th, 5:30 PM, Facilities Committee Meeting, Central Office. November 17th, 5:00 PM, Ed Programs Committee Meeting, Central Office. November 22nd, 5:00 PM, Policy Committee Meeting, Central Office. November 24th, Competitorial Day, no school. November 25th, Thanksgiving, no school, and central office is closed. November 26th, no school, central office is closed. November 28th through December 6th, Hanukkah. December 1st, 5:00 PM, Finance Committee Meeting, Central Office. December 6th, 7:00 PM, Swearey Inn of New City School Elector Officials, Westbrook Performing Arts Center. December 8th, 7:00 PM, School Committee Meeting, Westbrook Performing Arts Center. December 13th, 5:30 PM, Facilities Committee Meeting, Central Office. December 15th, 5:00 PM, Ed Programs Committee Meeting, Central Office. December 20th, 5:00 PM, Policy Committee Meeting, Central Office. December 23rd through the 31st, School Vacation. December 25th, Christmas, no school, Christmas, central office closed. January 1st, 2022, New Year's Day, no school, central office closed. January 5th, 2022, 5:00 PM, Finance Committee Meeting, Central Office. January 12th, 2022, 7:00 PM, School Committee Meeting, Westbrook Performing Arts Center. At this time, we have public participation on any school related matter. Anyone want to speak? Let Mr. Morse go first.
Thank you. I'm David Morris, 30 Deer Hill Lab, Ward 1. And I'm just here tonight simply to say thank you, especially to Steve Barry and Jess Meninsky, whose, I understand their service on this committee is coming to an end. Steve is my school committee representative and my neighbor. And I really appreciate your devotion to the children in the city, and in particular, I appreciate the steadfast support you've had for their health and safety throughout this pandemic. I know it's really been important to you. You've told me about that, and I really appreciated it. Jess, Meninsky, I'm so grateful that you stepped up to take on this role when your predecessor needed to step down. I've been involved in the city government long enough to know how challenging it can be to find people willing to step up in those circumstances. And we were incredibly fortunate that someone is highly qualified as you step forward. You've proven yourself to be a very valuable asset to this city, and I'm really hopeful that we're going to see you continue to serve in new roles in the future. I know I'm not alone in this. Just on my way here, I spoke to Councilor Anna Turcot, who asked me specifically to convey her thanks to you when I spoke tonight. So again, thank you and great job.
Steve, you have something to say?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody from the beginning, past committee members for showing me the ropes and my new members that I've been serving with for the last couple of years. I've enjoyed myself very much. I learned a lot, but my main thing was the children. Children come first, period. And it's been a tough year for all of us, for parents, for us. And then we had a fire on top of it all, but it seems like the school's going to be open very soon. But I just want to thank all of you and the parents for my two terms. And yeah, I'm going to retire. I am retiring, yes. And we'll be retiring in a couple of years, too, in real life, so if everything goes well. But Peter, thank you. We have known each other for a few years. And I just want to say thank you, all of you. You know, it's been a pleasure working with all of you and past and present committee members. Happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas. And a good New Year.
I just want to echo what David was saying, and thank you, Steve. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and thank you for your work on the union contracts and negotiation and your expertise and your help with the committee on that. and your expertise and your help with the committee on that. That was really great. And, you know, your goal of helping children has been really admirable. I appreciate that. And thank you, Jess, for, again, stepping up into this role and for your expertise that you brought to the committee was really valuable, and we'll certainly miss that. And I appreciate the work that you'll continue to do in your roles. Thank you.
All, I just want to reiterate what people have said. I mean, it's been a treat to get to know Steve better. I've always liked his sense of humor and his willingness to just, you know, welcome people and to share candy with people. I mean, those are just little things that really make a big difference.
Graduation.
Good and plenty, you know?
Graduation and candy.
So that was, I always enjoyed that. And Jessica, it's been awesome, and I've learned a lot from you, so thank you.
I also like to say thank you to both of you. Jessica, it was a pleasure working with you for the last three years. You do have a lot to bring. I hope you stay with us. You have a lot to offer to the city, to the city and to the school department. Steve? It's been fun.
Yeah, it has.
Negotiations, it's not going to be the same without you.
I'm going to miss that.
Oh, you're back. You challenged me at times during negotiations, and I appreciate that. And you are truly an advocate for kids, and I really appreciate that. It means a lot. And you are advocate for the staff at the Westbrook School Department. So thank you.
The bottom line is, we're here for the kids, period. That's, that's the bottom line. And to give them the best education we can afford without bankrupting the town. But that's all, this is why we're here. You know, that's, that's it in a nutshell right there. We're here for the kids. That's it. You know? And I hope they appreciate what we do for them. So, yeah. I will miss it. I will. Yeah.
I'll still see you.
Yeah, I know. I'll still see you at work.
If it's okay, I would just like to also say thank you for everyone and their generosity of time and just kind of coaching me up into this role. It seems like it's gone by in a flash. I mean, I started in March of last year, and here we are, just a little over a year later. You will be seeing me still. I'll come to school committee meetings when I have the opportunity, as well as some subcommittees. I just, I just want to express my deep respect for everyone who's here. I know we don't always agree, but I know that we're all here for the right reasons. And we all want to see the best, the absolute best for our students and give them all the opportunities they can to thrive. And for me personally, you know, having moved to Westbrook a few years ago, this is really the best way that I could invest in the future of my community, because these kiddos are the future. So I'll look forward to kind of watching you continue on and network and find ways to support your work and contribute however I can. And I wish Jess Foley, who's here tonight, the best of luck.
Okay, any announcements? Yeah?
One extra date that is in January. Mayor Foley and I met, and we are establishing a joint school committee, city council meeting on January twelfth, one of our quarterly meetings that we want to have, to foster better communication across the city and the schools. That's before the January school committee meeting, and it will be at 5:30 right here in this room. And happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans. Thank you for your service to our country, to our communities. If you have veterans in your families or in your neighborhoods, make sure you listen to their stories. Make sure that you say thank you for all they've done for us.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Steve, what's going to say?
Steve, second by Jessica. All in favor to adjourn? Seven approved, none opposed. We are adjourned.